All right, well, good evening. It is after 7:30, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Worcester City Council that's being held here live in Worcester City Hall this evening, March 18th. The meeting is also being livestreamed on YouTube, and our next meeting will be Monday, April 1st, No Fools 2024. With that, before Ms. Hamilton calls the roll, I was aware that Ms. Knappich and Mr. Myers were not going to be here this evening, so unfortunately, we have four budgeted items that will be able to pass, and the rest of them will remain until they will get first reading tonight, and they'll move on until the next meeting. So with that, Ms. Hamilton, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abernathy.
Here.
Mr. Gaffey.
Here.
Mr. Husey.
Here.
Ms. Knappich.
Mr. Malta.
Here.
Mr. Myers. Ms. Warden.
Here.
Okay, we still do, we do have a quorum, and the agenda will remain as presented. And at this time, I'll ask you to stand and join the members of the City Council resitting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. If I can have a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Abernathy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaffey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. Communications from the mayor. Mr. Reynolds, please let us know what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. First, I guess, an update on what we've been up to since our last meeting. On March 5th, I think it was the morning after our last meeting, we had a meeting out at Worcester Brush with the Welch Packaging Representatives. This is our first time, at least for me, opportunity to meet these people face to face, and they are very excited about coming to Worcester, not just to have a manufacturing presence here, but also becoming part of our community. You know, it's obviously we're in the very early stages, but I think they're going to be a great addition, not just from an employer standpoint, but from a community standpoint. I want to thank Worcester Brush for hosting that meeting and kind of organizing it. Also, we had WDC in the chamber who represented it, so I think it was a good, everybody was in attendance, I think, came away feeling very good about it, and we had some nice exchanges by email with them following, and again, they seem to be very excited to have a presence here. The same day, we did have the conference call with Senator Landis. We ran over some projects, and we said we could absolutely use some assistance from the state in funding them, and we will see. He's obviously not in a position to make any promises. It's going to go through whatever budgetary processes they go through in Columbus, but fingers crossed there. We later that week, we happened to have on the same day separate meetings with MCTV and Dominion Energy, which I didn't write this down here, but it's not Dominion anymore. They announced that day, what's the new name?
I'll have to look it up.
Embridge.
Embridge, that's right. The MCTV was more of a getting to me, to getting to know you meeting, because I was not familiar with them, and Joel was, and they talked a little bit about their service upgrades. The Dominion one, no knock on MCTV, but the Dominion one was much more important to us because they're talking about capacity and delivery of service, and we can talk all about residential expansion and industrial expansion, but if they, you know, can't get gas to them, it's not going to go. So again, I thought, I felt good about the meetings and their, you know, there are concerns on our ends about things that they could be doing better, and Joel communicated those to them, and I think it came away feeling good. I think John said it on that meeting as well. We had a meeting then, WDC breakfast meeting last week, again, two projects that were highlighted in that, that some of which you're familiar with and some not maybe. The Local Roots development was highlighted there, and again, we've heard that talk to some extent. It was new to some in the room. The one that was, at least news to me, is the Career Center is doing an expansion, and they're actually going to do an addition to one of the existing buildings, and really focusing on increasing their capacity for the welding program, which is, could be well received by the manufacturing industry. It's a great opportunity, it's one of those, you know, for those industrial arts programs there, our trade skill programs, those are like a golden ticket. You know, if you get through those programs, you get your certification, and you are set. And, you know, I think a lot of people are familiar with that and take advantage of it, but there's people that aren't, and there's also capacity limitations, so this addresses one of those things. Also, I had a meeting with the Wayne Trails Committee, that's our local bike path group, and Mr. Brenman, who just left, is still sitting on that committee, and I think historically, sometimes those meetings, it's them coming to the city and saying, here's what we need to do for you, and I had the pleasure of being in a position to tell them good news for them. First of them is a piece of legislation that Ms. Warden's going to have tonight, that is one addition or one additional step in implementing the bike trails around the city, and Ms. Warden will talk more about that later. The second thing is, and this was, Joel touched on this very briefly in his slide, you may have not have caught it, but we've got proposals for another development at the northwest corner, residential development, at the northwest corner of Mechanicsburg Road and Silver Road, about 100 housing units there, and the thing that they're, we're enthused about is that potentially there's a possibility of putting a bike trail through that that'll connect Clear Creek Park with Mechanicsburg Road and up through there, so again, it's not a comprehensive thing where it gets us all the way to where we want to be, but it's another step in that process. The big news probably was last Thursday, we hosted the Howard Department of Development, their team led by the director, Lydia Mahalik. She, and I gotta give Jonathan Malley credit for this, for he organized this, they are doing a tour of the state pretty much, going around to a bunch of the cities that were recognized in that site selection competition, and they scheduled a date with us and gave us basically a two-hour window, and said, here's the things we'd like to have done in two hours, and it was, you know, once he some, some of the economic expansion we had, they went and toured downtown, and as you can imagine, pulling it off in a two-hour window was a little challenging, but we got it done, and I, that's kind of the royal we, Jonathan got it done, got it all planned out. We started out at Worcester Brush, and again, thanked them for hosting us, gave them a quick by their standards tour of their facility, probably took 20, 25 minutes. Then we ended up at Mariola's, met down there, had a little history on that, and again, this is part, kind of important because of the Department of Development role in that, because they helped in the funding for the Worcester Brush expansion, helped in the funding for the Mariola's project down there. Then, again, in mid-March, you can't count on this, we had the ability to walk down Liberty Street, stopped in at the Worcester Works project, got a little mini tour there, had a chance to stop at the square, looked at the shelter there, the pavilion there, and explanation about the type of activities that were part of that, and again, it worked pretty well because we are other community partners involved in this. Out at the Worcester Brush facility, we had the WDC involved in the chamber, and when we were doing the walking tour, the chamber and Main Street were part of that presentation. Then we ended up at Local Roots, and we had another, Adam gave us another presentation of what they're doing there, and, you know, now, again, she's a professional politician, so she's, you know, used to making, you know, saying to everybody that this is the greatest thing I've ever seen, but she did seem genuinely impressed, and her team was with Worcester, and I thought we showed very well. And again, I want to appreciate everybody that put time and effort into doing that, Jonathan primarily, because not only did he organize it, but he kept us moving too. He was like the traffic cop, said, we got to go, 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 and by and large, I think they got here about 15 minutes late, but we, two hours after they, we started, they were done, so hats off to him for doing that. Again, want to thank all those businesses that offer, offered us the opportunity to come in and give us a little tour, so Mariola's, Worcester Works, Local Roots, Worcester Brush again. So, yeah, I thought it, again, it was a nice day, if you recall, last Thursday, before this cold wave came in, I thought Worcester showed beautifully that day, and made, you know, made you really feel proud about what, what we've got going here. And then Joel touched on this this morning, we, you know, made an effort to resume quarterly meetings with WDC, talk about their business outreach program, that's one of the things in the economic strategic plan that the advisor came back, or the consultant came back, said, we need to do a better job of reaching out to local businesses and talking to them about their needs. So one of the things we talked about this morning was trying to coordinate that, because WDC does that same thing on a countywide basis, and when we've got a Worcester business involved, we're trying to coordinate that, you know, does it make sense for us to go together, or at the very least, we want to be talking to each other, so I thought it was a productive meeting from that standpoint. As far as upcoming events, the 25th, which I guess is next week, we're doing a road trip to Findlay, because Findlay was the city that got the recognition as the Metropolitan winner, and so that's where the activities are going to be, there's going to be a hot Department of Development event there, some panel discussions, I've been invited to sit in on one of the panels, and they're going to, you know, it's pretty interesting, I've been in here about 75 days now, they're going to ask me about economic development, so what I'll talk about is some of the things that Worcester's done, just what I've picked up by osmosis, as opposed to things I've actually been involved in firsthand, but we'll see how that goes. So Joel has made it clear, he is not coming back from vacation to do that, so I'm not sure who, who else is going to accompany me on that one, but there will be a few of us in Findlay next Monday. Couple of things I want to highlight, I did provide, and this was part of Joel's, if he's caught it last Friday, I think he sent this out, the point in time count, I don't know that he referenced it in the email itself, but just a few comments on that. At the top, there's two different graphs, and those represent two different measurements, because it, and if you think about it real hard, or you look at it real closely, you'll say, well, those numbers don't match, and they don't, but it's two different measurements. So the one on the left is the actual homeless point in time count, and some of you may have participated in that before, I know Joel has done, but the object is to go out at a certain time and try to count all the people living on the streets countywide, that's a countywide number. And obviously, it's not very scientific, you know, you can't send out notice to the homeless people and say, okay, it's 7 o'clock, everybody that's homeless, you know, come out and stand in the street and raise your hand. So you've got to actually find them, you know, where they are hunkered down, so there's, you know, almost certainly an undercount, so you know that. The second number is a number provided through the public schools, and their methodology may be different, and is how they count kids, because, and how you know this is off is that the left graph is an accounting of everybody, man, woman, and child, where the one on the right is just students, so that tells you that the one on the left is an undercount. But I provide this for two things. First of all, it gives you a sense, I think, of trend data, and it kind of tells you that, you know, there's some up and downs on that, but trend-wise, the numbers holding pretty steady, at least over the last four years. Second thing I would say is that, you know, that's a countywide number, or these are countywide numbers, we know that Worcester's got about 20% of the countywide population, but we also know that Worcester's got a much larger percentage of that of the homeless population, because this is where the services are. So just some indication there, and maybe one more thing I would point out is that number in the lower right, almost 70% of the unsheltered have been homeless for more than a year. So, you know, clearly, we're dealing with some people with some chronic problems that don't, that aren't solved easily for the most part, and again, it's, it's always dangerous to make blanket statements about the homeless population, because everyone's an individual case of individual circumstances, but a large number of these people are dealing with chronic situations that, that aren't solved easily, so we want to talk about that. Tonight's agenda, I touched on the bike loop piece that Jen's going to talk about, I think most of the rest of the legislation falls into two different categories, and I thought it might be, save a little bit of time tonight, I know I take up a lot of time, but in this occasion, I think I'm going to save some time, and I'm going to ask Joel and Andre, respectively, to give just a brief overview of the pieces of legislation that they are putting forward, some of them falling like the bricks and mortar type of things, and then Andre's on the how to pay for things. Joel?
Okay, I'm going to start with the Cooperative Agreement, which is 2024-23, and just for some of the council people who might not have been here before, so anytime ODOT does work inside the city limits, like on Route 33, 83, even though they're paying for it, they have, technically, they get permission from us to do the work inside the city, so that's what that is, that's some resurfacing on Route 30, some various places that are actually in the city, so no cost to the city, but that, that's why, why that legislation looks weird, because that's their legislation, the way they like, the way they like to see it, so that, that'll come up periodically. A lot of times, they don't give us very much time, they, they don't operate on our schedule, so they might need it like right away, so that's why you might see some of those come pretty quickly, just based on their schedule. The next one would be the culvert on Bowman and Washington, they're just a small project, relatively speaking, just a, an old culvert that needs to be replaced, it is budgeted, so John can talk more about that, you know, sort of a just typical type of thing we're doing. The 2024-25, we usually have one of these a year, we usually have two different asphalt pavement projects, large ones, and then one concrete replacement, so this is the concrete, the replaced concrete on several streets, we do one of these every year, this is about 600,000, and you can see on the, on the agenda request, Meadows, Willoughby Hills, Timberlane, and Hartsler are the main areas where they're doing some concrete replacement. Typically, just how we do it, we estimate, John Engineering estimates how much, 600,000, if, there's always more concrete replacement to do than, than, than what this is, so usually, he has a list that's bigger, and if we get good bids, then we'll usually add in, you know, a couple more places on those same streets, just to use up that money and fix the, fix the concrete. So there, again, that's, that's an annual thing that we do. The next one down is resurfacing parking lots, those have been on our list for quite a while, we just haven't got to them, so the North Buckeye and South Buckeye parking lots, so two of our main, closest to downtown parking lots, the ones that are connected to the downtown by those alleys with the lights, we're just going to be resurfacing and then restructuring those. The next one, sanitary sewer lining, again, this is a project, we usually do one of these a year, where we line, you know, where, usually, we'll go in and televise our DNC crew, we'll televise all, you know, sections of our sewer, figure out ones that we have to replace because they're so bad, or ones where, you know, it's still in decent shape, but there's cracks, water, roots, things get in, we can actually line it, go in a manhole and line that, it's almost like putting a sock in and pulling it backwards through, and then usually, you know, a resin that then hardens in there, so we do those, usually a large project every year. This one does have some OPWC funding in it, I didn't remember how much OPWC funding.
Around 300,000.
Around 300, so not quite half of this one will be funded through an OPWC grant, again, this is an, that's an annual project that we do. The next one, and these, these don't happen very often, but when we do a large roadway project like, like we did on Melrose, so this actually started a couple of years ago, and the process requires the city engineering to do an estimate, figure out how much the project's going to cost, then they, they bring that to council, council has to accept the assessment piece of that. We actually have a equalization board where all, everybody on the street gets an estimate of what their assessments are going to be. We have to do those assessments in accordance with law, it has to be a benefit assessment, whether that's front footage or trips, in this case, front footage.
Trips for this one.
Is it trips for this?
Trip generation.
So there's, there's only a couple types that are allowed by law, and then, then we have, that's why usually the, the ordinances or the legislation is so lengthy, because we have to dot all our i's and cross all our t's and comply with law. Usually, it's only a portion of the project is assessed, so by this time, the assessments have already been published, people have had a chance to issue, you know, complaints or concerns about those, they've been heard by the equalization board, which is three distant, you know, three citizens that have nothing to do with the project, that comes back to council, this all would have happened before the current council people are here, that would have come back to council to approve that assessment report, at that point, you know, those, those assessments are set, and that's a cap, it can't be more than that, so project's bid out, it's constructed, if it, if it came in more, the, the city eats the difference, the, the residents never pay more than that initial assessment. It comes in under, then that savings is passed along to the residents, and that's what this legislation is, it shows all, so all of that, the spreadsheet that John provided has all the assessments that have already been published, everybody's already seen, it's already been through the process, in this case, the project came in a little under, so everybody's assessments will be a little less than what was originally published a year or more ago when the project, before the project started. So this will be the last piece, is assessing those, now, residents have an option, they can either, once they, once they get that assessment amount, they can pay it all, they could pay any portion of it they want, 25%, 50%, 75%, whatever's left over, they could pay none of it, whatever's left over, then we certify that to the, to the county auditor, and part of the legislation sets an interest rate and a payback period, and then they can just pay, that will go on their taxes, and then, so when they pay their taxes every year, there's a, there's a certain portion that comes out every year. So I don't know what typically, probably less than half maybe paid the whole.
Yeah, it depends on how large the numbers are, but yeah.
So usually, a portion pay it all, some pay a little bit, and then the rest just let it go on to their taxes and pay, pay those off, it stays with, so if they sold their house, sold their property, it would go, put the property taxes to the next person. So that's what that one is. And the last one is the bike loop, and this is just to acquire right away, we've got to get easements, both temporary and permanent easements, as we put the bike path in for the Loop 3 there, so we're getting a significant portion of the construction paid for with a, with an ODOT grant, but the right away, we have to purchase ourselves, so that's just authorization to purchase right away, a lot of little pieces over the whole, the whole project, so that's what that is, hopefully, if there's any details, John, we'll get there. The rest are Andre's.
I should just go in there. You know, we're trying this out, this kind of previewing what the agenda is like tonight, and tonight's taking a little longer, and, you know, if this doesn't work well, you know, give me feedback and we'll cut it down, but I thought for anybody watching, or maybe for council as a whole, it's a better way to give maybe a handle on what we have before us, not trying to cut off conversation or questions when the items come up, and I'm not trying to cut that off at all, so don't feel like just because we gave you an overview headed in that we're going to, you know, not want to answer questions when the time comes to, to talk about that specific piece, so Andre.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to say props to Mr. Abernathy, he, like, has been very engaging, like his, the two predecessors, Mr. Sanders and Mr. John Anso, so there's a giant sheet in front of you tonight because of some of the questions he had asked, so there's two data tables on there, the first data table shows our debt outstanding by fund at December 31st and 14th, and projected through 2028. The one below that is our annual debt service payments by fund for the same period, 2014 through 2028, and another shout out to a former council member, the line graphs are charts at the bottom are in honor of Mr. Albright, he always liked seeing those, so I thought he loved seeing the pictures. So I do have five pieces of legislation with respect to debt, and one is sort of a tandem with Jonathan and I. The first piece, I'm going to talk about it real quick, is 2409, this is legislation for three, the three sanitary sewer lines, one is for the Spring Run sanitary sewer, the new development off of Oak Hill, one is a West Milltown Gravies sewer, and the other is our Christmas Run sewer replacement that's currently being done now. These will be converted to bonds and the TIF, and we'll be paying the debt service on this. It'll be a 25-year maturity, however, I will set up something called call provision, so if the TIF does well, we can retire the debt early. We actually did this way back when, when we had the long road TIF, it did so well that we were able to pay it off, like, I think in seven years. So we always do that call provision, so that, that's that ordinance, those three sewer lines. 2024-10, and this is, Joel had mentioned, this is for the Melrose Drive assessments, these will be capped at 15 years, and the, that is a max amount of 565, if, if, if half of it's paid, then it'll only be half of that, that will, the bond will be issued for, and then that, that'll be matched to, like Joel said, the debt service payments will basically go on somebody's tax duplicate, those will match up. So it's basically, we're just financing the project for the property owner. The 2024-11, this is the Christmas Run pool that was in the budget, I threw that on there because we tried to maximize what's called economies of scale, so I put that on, if we were issuing debt, I thought I should take advantage of that, that debt is, would be basically a 15-year debt, if you're wondering how long the maturity would be on that, 15 year on the swimming pool. The 2024-12, this is for, this is again paid for by the TIF, this is essentially, basically three sort of projects all tied into one, it's the roundabout at Oak Hill and Milltown, it is also bringing up the portion of the county roads that area to city standards that we annex, which would be essentially Oak Hill from Oldman to Milltown, and it would be Milltown from Oak Hill to Commerce Parkway approximately, bringing those up to city standards, so those will all be done, that's about 4.0, just under 4.7 million. Again, we'll have a 25-year maturity, but we'll have call provisions built in these as well, so if, we have, basically have five TIF zones, so if they would happen to develop and explode, then we have some significant revenues and could hopefully, you know, pay those off early, that'd be my intention anyway. The other one is our 3.1 for basically two sewer projects, one is our bio-solids phase 2, that's about 2.1 million, and then there's, there's some money built in for our, our digest repairs, we won't even know that until I think April 1st we get the bid in for that, so it, 1 million is a max on those, we won't, we'll price them, we can't price these any higher, but we can price them lower when we go, or later on down the road. The other thing, this is, these are all third read, items for three readings, okay, so we're not asking for suspension, and especially in the case of the, the Melrose assessments, the assessing legislation needs passed before the bond legislation, so then, that was, the only other item on here was, we, Jonathan, all credit goes to Jonathan for this, 2024-06, this is to amend our budget, he got, oh, he and our partners, they applied for a competitive grant, they got the grant, so this just budgets that, and then there's a little bit from a leftover grant from a prior year, the 22-5, I think it is, that we'll be budgeting that as well, if you pass the ordinance, and actually, part of this also may dovetail into what Joel said, maybe some of those will help, these chip funds can help some of the housing stock in the southern portion of our city. I think that was all I had, but I, again, I'd be willing to take any questions here or even call me, like, Mike, he called me a couple times, emailed me, and it's very encouraging to see that, you know, people pay attention to what they're doing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andre, and thank you, Joel. And then I'm going to, the one thing I'm going to add tonight is coming attractions, just because we had a couple topics that you've been talking about or asking about before, is that we are working on a record before, is that we are working on a recreational marijuana dispensary zoning law addition. And again, we are trying to make it clear, and we've said this before, but we are looking to assist council in developing whatever legislation you want here. We're not necessarily offering up or promoting a particular plan, but we will, you know, when I say we, again, that's Mr. Scavelli, is going to work with you to draft whatever legislation the council wants to adopt in here. But what we're going to do as a starting point for your discussion is, we're going to take the medical marijuana statute that we adopted, however many years ago that happened, and just modify it to also encompass recreational marijuana. You know, we're anticipating that the regulatory framework that the state comes up with is going to be similar to what they used before. And they're also, you know, I think we're going to have probably some permitting involved that's similar to what we have now for beer and alcohol. So again, still got some tweaks to do on that. But we'll, in the next couple councils meetings, we'll have that out for first review, and I'm sure there'll be an interesting discussion that follows that. And again, we want to facilitate and assist council in coming to a decision on that one. But the only guideline, we talked about this a little bit internally, the only thing that we're going to push is, we're going to advocate against any proposal you have that puts our law enforcement officers in a difficult position. And I don't, I think you would recognize that, was we don't want to come up with anything that they can't enforce or is impractical to enforce. So that's, aside from that, you know, we'll let you try to discern what the will of the community is, which is a little difficult because, you know, the state passed the issue too, but our community was pretty evenly split on the thing. So, you know, it's trying to find that happy medium that recognizes that. And again, we want to help on this, but we're not pushing one outcome or another on this. Second thing is, we are going to bring back the issue on the bidding threshold. For, where background, the state of Ohio has already set a minimum figure for at what point you had to have competitive bidding on issues. At one point, it was $15,000. Then it was increased to $25,000, and then to 50. And in July of 2023, last summer, it went to $75,000. And, you know, the rationale behind that is basically to keep up with inflation. There becomes a certain point where you can't attract bids. Nobody wants to, you know, if you had a $500 project, you wouldn't be able to attract people to say, I want to bid on $500. And so there's, becomes a point of diminishing returns. As inflation takes a hold, that point gets higher and higher. And traditionally, the city of Worcester has increased their limits right along with the state law until this last time. And again, we are going to come back to you in the next meeting or the meeting after and ask you to reexamine that. One thing different we're going to do, though, is last time, we asked that anything that was below the limit not come to council for approval. We're going to leave that piece alone. So that anything falling in the 50 to $75,000 range will still come to council for approval. You can vote it up and vote it down. And if there is a specific piece that you feel warrants competitive bidding, you can make us do that. But it wouldn't be applied uniformly. Because what we're finding out is that, and I think we actually left, but the Community Center for Learning is best example, is that, you know, it fell within that range. They couldn't get, they couldn't find people to submit bids on it. So they went through the mechanisms of doing that, which resulted in delay. And you even pay for the privilege of doing that because you have to pay to actually run the ads. So we're not really seeing any price benefit. In fact, you know, I think the typical supplier, when it's not a, when it's not a contract you're going to make a lot of money on, if you ask them what it's going to cost to do something today versus what will you charge me for this in two months, they're going to pad that number to cover inflation or what else might, what goes wrong. So we're having managers spend time to do the bidding, we're ending up with a higher price, we're ending up with delays, and we're paying for that privilege through the advertising. So we're going to ask you to revisit that. But again, reserving to council the authority to vote yes or no on anything over 50. And that's all I've got. So again, sorry for tying up so much of your meeting, but there's a lot of stuff going on, and we'll leave you to it.
Thank you. We have no petitions or communications from the public. We have no committee reports, and we had no public hearings. And we have no unfinished business. So at that point, we will step right into new business. We'll have our first reading on ordinance 2024-06. Ms. Hamilton, if you please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2024-06, an ordinance amending the annual appropriation ordinance and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
I'll open with a question just for clarification. Is any of the money, or let me ask this, is all the money just grant money at this point? There's no tax money involved? It's just, it's grant money? Okay. So essentially, we're just trying to shift the money, the grant money, into the budget, release it so it can be utilized at that point.
It'll be drawn down. Certain projects.
Okay. Okay. Because it's amendment, it's not considered budget correct?
Yeah, I think it is.
It's going to.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a three, it's a three-rate.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Three-reading item, excuse me.
So at this point, I don't have any other further questions. I open up to the rest of council if there's any additional questions.
Does council have any additional questions related to this?
Then I say, let's go ahead and move it on.
Can.
No move, meaning I'm.
Yeah, it's, well, considering the fact it's had its first reading and.
First reading done.
First reading, and next item, second item, will be Resolution 2024-23. Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Resolution number 2024-23, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for resurfacing urban paving within the city of Worcester and allowing for immediate enactment.
All right. Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this resolution would just give ODOT consent to resurface the pavement with overlay that they call smooth seal along portions of Route 30, will not cost the city anything as Joel explained earlier. And this just increases the lifespan of the surface. Unfortunately, we do not have a quorum, so we were going to leave this on first reading this evening.
Well, technically, we have a quorum. We just don't have the ability to.
Oh, I'm sorry. We don't have the.
Supermajority in order to move it to third and final.
Supermajority. I forgot. Thank you.
All right. No questions, and it's had its first reading. We'll move on to Resolution 2024-24. Ms. Hamilton?
Resolution number 2024-24, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the replacement of the stone culvert on East Bowman Street near the Washington Street intersection and allowing for immediate enactment.
All right. This item is budgeted, and Ms. Warden, it's yours to introduce.
Thank you again. Yes, this is just simply to allow the city to advertise for bids to, and enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder to replace the culvert. This is a three-by-three-foot stone culvert, and it's in poor condition. The estimated cost is approximately $75,000, which is a budgeted item. So I am going to make a motion to adopt, and then we'll ask if there's any questions.
All right. Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Malta. Any questions from council related to this? If not, Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Malta.
Yes.
Gaffey.
Yes.
Husey.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
All right. Resolution is adopted. Ms. Hamilton, if you read the resolution 2024-25, please.
Resolution number 2024-25, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for pavement replacement and allowing for immediate enactment.
All right. This is also a budgeted item and also by Ms. Warden. So Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this is a request for the city to go out to bids for concrete pavement replacement along portions of streets within the Meadows, Willoughby Hills, and as well as Timberline and Hartsler Drives. These residents, or as residents of these neighborhoods can attest, some of the pavement is in really poor condition. And so they're doing what's called selective replacement, so it's not the entire street, but portions of it that will be repaired. That is a budgeted item and expected to cost approximately $600,000. I would move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Husey. I guess before council has any questions, I'm just curious, I mean, I know, I live on a concrete street, and I know the city worked on it two and a half, three years ago. I'm just curious, in terms of these selective patch jobs, I mean, are they holding up? I mean, again, you put more seams in the concrete, just more opportunity for water to bleed down and, I mean.
Right, that's, yeah, yeah. Anytime you do concrete replacement, concrete pavement is great when it's initially constructed, but it just, it becomes a maintenance issue the longer it goes. But you have to come to the decision of, do you take the whole thing out and completely redo it? Or do you go in and do the selective replacement, try to grab the worst pieces and replace them? So for these streets, we feel like they're not that old, that there's still a lot of life there, but obviously, if you drive them, there are places that need, need work. So we feel like that's the most cost-effective solution in this case.
Okay. Anyone else?
Lower traffic streets.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, understood. Any other questions from council? All right. Ms. Hamilton, you call the roll to adopt, please.
Gaffey.
Yes.
Husey.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Malta.
Yes.
All right. Motion is adopted. Oh, next item, Resolution 2024-26. Ms. Hamilton, the floor is yours.
Resolution number 2024-26, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the resurfacing of South Buckeye and North Buckeye Street parking lots within the city of Worcester and providing for immediate enactment.
All right. This item is not budgeted, but Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. As Joel mentioned earlier, these are two lots downtown that the city has kind of been eyeing to resurface for a while now, and they are, they are up for a makeover. So this is going to reduce operating costs by decreasing maintenance to the current pavement and also reduce any risk of having any claims against the city on, you know, driver's vehicles down there. It's projected to cost about $140,000, but we're going to leave it right there tonight because it is not budgeted.
This is budgeted.
I was going to say, my question, I was just going to ask, why is this not budgeted?
This is budgeted.
It said it wasn't in the paperwork, so.
Yeah, paperwork shows it as three readings.
The request says.
Oh, a new one?
This was the main excursion?
Yeah, that's never, I'm sorry. Look up here, above. Because I've fallen through that a million times.
Yeah, it is listed as three readings.
If it says first reading, third reading.
Gotcha.
Yeah. It's, but, so, okay, well, let's move to adopt.
All right. So to clarify, it is budgeted at this point, and Ms. Warden has motion to adopt. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Husey. Call the roll, please. Motion to adopt.
Husey.
May I ask a question real quick?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Just what's the timeframe on the resurfacing for these lots? And how does the city kind of work around the, you know, I know there's some folks with apartment, in the apartments who live there and, you know, balancing the traffic and all that? Just how does that look, I guess?
I'm assuming.
Okay.
So there'll only be inconvenience while they're doing that section, and then they're off.
Okay, so you're not closing the whole lot, you know, and doing North Buckeye first or anything?
We can do it whatever, whatever makes the most sense and is least disruptive.
I'm just curious how you guys do it, yeah.
We haven't done a, to be honest, we haven't resurfaced a parking lot in a while, so. We'll, we'll figure that out. But the idea is to have a contractor do it so they can get in and out quickly. Obviously, our PPM division, they do a lot of paving, but one thing they lack is a milling machine. So they're dependent upon a contractor to come in and do all the milling, and then they can go in and pave. Where in this case, if we just hire a contractor, they can come in, they can mill it, they can pave it, they can get it all done pretty quick. So we'll work through those details as far as if it's, yeah, doing it in sections or all at once, getting it done quick. Good question.
Okay. That was all I had, Mr. President.
All right. Very good. Well.
Start again?
We'll start again.
Husey.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Malta.
Yes.
Gaffey.
Yes.
Okay, resolution is adopted. Next resolution, 2024-27, which will be introduced by Mr. Malta and is another budgeted item. So Ms. Hamilton, please read the resolution for us.
Resolution number 2024-27, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the sanitary sewer lining project and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
Thank you. We have had several conversations. I believe we've talked about 300,000 that's available to us of the $700,000 project, lining the sewer, budgeted item. Does anybody have any other additional questions for?
I'm just curious what the lifespan is on something like this when you line the sewer pipes?
It is actually a structural liner, so it actually sets up, and that can become like the host pipe. So I think they say like a 40- or 50-year lifespan on those. And we do have, we've been doing this for quite a while, so there are pipes that are 15, 20 years old that have been lined there in the system that are still performing as they should.
Okay. All right. Motion for us.
I've moved to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Malta. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaffey. Ms. Hamilton, will you please call the roll?
Husey.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Malta.
Yes.
Gaffey.
Yes.
All right. Okay. Our next item is ordinance 2024-07. Ms. Hamilton?
A deep breath for this one.
Yes, absolutely.
Ordinance number 2024-07, an ordinance levying specialist assessments for the improvement of Melrose Drive between certain termini by grading, draining, widening, paving, resurfacing, constructing curbs, gutters, a multi-use path, sidewalks and driveway approaches, installing storm sewers, catch basins, manholes, water mains, fire hydrants, and traffic control signs and devices, and acquiring any real estate and interest altogether with the necessary appurtenances and allowing for immediate enactment.
Thank you. Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you. First of all, am I correct in saying that this is not budgeted? All right. You never know. All right. So this is an ordinance requesting levy assessments for the property owners for the improvements that Ms. Hamilton just listed in the reading of this ordinance, along Melrose Drive between East Milltown and East Smithville Western Roads. The, yeah, I'm not going to go into details on any of that, but back in 2021, there was a resolution of necessity that was passed by council, and there was an equalization board appointed. We did have a few residents that chose to meet with the equalization board and voiced their concern or disagreement with the proposed assessments. And one of the good pieces of news of this, as Joel brought up earlier, is that the final cost of the project was almost $200,000 less. almost $200,000 less than the original estimate, and so I think property owners, even though nobody wants a higher bill or an assessment, they will be happy to know that it's going to be less than they were originally told that it would be. The, a portion of these costs were paid by a grant that the city received, so the remaining amount that is to be assessed is 500,334, I'm sorry, 534,664, restart. This is a big number, I'm not used to this. So property owners can expect to receive the assessments at the end of March or the beginning of April, which perhaps, Mr. Rice, when we discuss this, I know that it's, it's, they have 30 days from when this is passed, so we're not obviously going to be able to pass this this evening, so if the assessments go out at the end of March or early April, they're still going to have 30 days from when the ordinance is passed at City Council.
Well, we won't send them out.
Until it's passed, so, all right. That's why, when we first talked about it, I'm like, how are they going to get it at the end of March?
That was a loud assumption, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, I guess we're going to keep this on first reading this evening, and we can get into more details if, if necessary at the next meeting when the rest of council's here. Maybe I can say the actual...
Question.
...number then.
Maybe it's more for administration. What warranted the Melrose residents to get assessed? I'm curious why this wouldn't be just scope of city work and why they would be assessed?
So, I've been in the city for 24 years, there's not been one major roadway project we haven't assessed a portion of.
Okay.
So, usually what we do, we can assess 98% of projects by law, except for intersections. We never assess that much. What we typically do, we take your overall project cost, we subtract out the cost of the intersections, because that's considered sort of no man's land, it's not adjacent to, and serving more than just, you know, the property owners. We subtract out water and sewer typically, storms, since those aren't paid for by the rates that people are already paying for water, sewer, and storm, and that's how we calculate rates everybody pays. Then we subtract out any funding we get, and grant funding, anything like that, we subtract that out, and then we subtract out usually things like signs and those kind of things, so usually what, there's only a portion that's left is usually the actual roadway, the sidewalk, the curb, that is right in front of, of the house or adjacent to and used, that they're getting the most benefit from. So we've always assessed anywhere from 15 to 25, 30% of every roadway project based on the benefit people are getting from it. And what that does is by doing that, that, you know, we can do more roadway projects, we can do more other projects like that, do more of the road than we maybe would have if, if we were just going to do that all, so we wouldn't be, for instance, if we didn't do that, we wouldn't be doing the concrete streets, we wouldn't be doing some of the resurfacing and those things that benefit the rest of the citizens of the city.
So I just, so I can understand, like, so every road project we're doing right now we're assessing?
Every complete reconstruction, not resurfacing, not, not concrete pavement repairs, you know, those kind of things. When we, when there's a road out there that's just some asphalt and ditches, an unimproved street, so everybody that lives in the city of Worcester that lives on an unimproved street should consider at some point that you're probably going to get, your road's going to get improved and you might get assessed a portion of that. That's part of the benefit of living in a city.
So some of the recent ones that we've done where we've assessed followed the same process would be West Highland a couple of years ago, Burbank Road about five years ago in front of the Kenny property, heck, we did the same thing on those.
The entire stretch of Milltown, going all the way back, we did that one.
Akron Road.
Akron Road was also assessed. Every, every single roadway project was a complete reconstruction to bring it to current standards. A portion has, we assess based on the benefit that's derived.
Okay.
And I think that's a, that was a good question, and I think the distinction is that when you're doing that roadway upgrade like that, installing storm sewer sidewalks and all that, you are actually improving, you know, the homeowner gets a benefit out of it in terms of property values.
Okay.
That, that's one other check, you can assess more than one-third of the value of the property, so that's another, you'll see if you go through that spreadsheet, there's a few of those that reached that point, so that they were capped as well.
I'll have a follow-up to this in a couple of, to try and understand it further, but I'll save it for a few down the road.
All right, very good.
If I could add to it, I think, Joel, you touched on this a little bit, but there, the property owners do have the two options, they can either pay by cash or check within the allotted 30-day period, or they can make 15 annual installments, and that's charged interest at 6%. Yeah, I think that's all I wanted to add to that.
Okay.
One of the things we do, we have that to pass, is we do, we calculate some typical, we look at what may be a median assessment, as it would be calculated at 6% of 15 years, what would that pay them to be? I don't know if you did that, I should ask. Typically, that's something that we'll share, and we'll share definitely with each of the property owners who call, how much would that be? If it's only adding, $200,000 or something.
Right, and most people don't have, you know, they don't want to spend the chunk of money right up front, so...
I don't have that right in front of me, but what I will say is with this being trip generation instead of front footage, for all the single-family residential, it's like $1,100, the assessment, so...
$1,100, 6% of 15 years is really small.
Yeah.
So, the total, I'm, I'm looking down first, so the total project is over $4 million and just the homeowners are responsible for half a million of it?
Correct.
Okay.
Everybody good? All right. Ordinance 2024-07's had its first reading, and we'll move on to Resolution 2024-28, if you would, Ms. Hamilton.
Resolution 2024-28, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into contracts for right-of-way acquisition related to the Worcester Loop Phase III Bike Trail Project and allowing for immediate enactment.
All right, this is a budgeted item, and Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This is a request to authorize purchase of permanent and temporary easements in order to construct Phase III of the city's bike path. Previous legislation was passed by council authorizing this agreement with ODOT for federal funding and authorizing the engineering design services and the acquisition services. The easements are necessary to acquire the rights of way for properties located within the project area. The costs are projected to be $70,000, and they are included in our 2024 capital plan. I would like to move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Husei. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just real quick for the administration, where's the, what's the general area for Phase III? Where are we talking?
We're talking Milltown Road from the eastern end at Melrose, west to Frenchville.
And then also that little stretch on Melrose where we ended the path with the reconstruction just north of Milltown, and then it'll go south of Milltown to where Phase I of the Melrose Improvement came up, it's somewhere around Wildwood.
Okay. Yeah, I just wasn't familiar with all the phases, I just wanted to touch base where we're at.
I meant to include that in my notes, maybe.
We used to have a map. Somewhere.
It's in my office, so, I should, next time, I'll, I'll log it up, see if it's on the website.
Yeah, it's on the website, okay. Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, Ms. Hamilton, please call the...
Abernathy.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Malta.
Yes.
Gaffey.
Yes.
Husei.
Yes.
Okay, the resolution 2024-28's been adopted, and we'll move into the, I won't say the next phase, but the next few that we have related to the bond issues, and with that, Ms. Hamilton, if you'll read Ordinance 2024-09, please.
Ordinance number 2024-09, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $4,030,000 for the purpose of paying costs of improving and expanding the city's sanitary sewer, sewerage system by constructing and reconstructing sanitary sewers, forced mains, and lift stations, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto and allowing for immediate enactment.
All right, Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
It's a lot. So, honestly, it's a, it's a lot of money. We're, we're looking to fund sanitary, it's budgeted. I don't want to speak too deeply when it comes to the borrowing of the funds, we got a pretty good explanation earlier. Andre, is there, is there anything else that you want to, want to add in regards to this?
No, just the fact that we're going to use the TIP funds to pay the debt service on, on these sanitary sewer lines.
Okay.
But it, and I could interject again, just as a kind of refresher, because only Jen who's here, we passed the last TIP, but that's tax increment funding, and, you know, we divert the real tax dollars from any development within the area that's included within the TIP, and those tax dollars are used to pay for improvements within that district, so it's...
And it's anything, it's rowed away, so the big project that's underway right now is going to cause everybody, that's because of the traffic control, all of the sewer downstream of that, and, and associated with that. So we anticipated the issuance of the debt when we passed all of the TIP legislation passed last year. Once new, yeah.
So it's, you know, because of this development, we were able to open up that area for, excuse me, because of the TIP, we were able to open up that area for development by providing sewer, by improving the roads, and because of that development, it's going to add to the tax base, and that tax revenue is going to be specifically earmarked to pay for those improvements, and we're just going to bridge the gap between the installation of those improvements and the tax revenue is going to pay it off.
I think the one general question I'll ask, and it's more financial, according to several financial advisors I talked to, looking at municipal bonds, are you looking at like a rate of around 3.84% in that range for the bonds?
The 20-year bond buyer index, which rates 20, double-rate of bonds was, last week was at 3.52, so I went, I went a little higher, I think I estimated our cost of 375.
So, pretty close?
Yeah.
Okay. And you feel pretty comfortable in that range?
Yeah, we have, we have a lot of interest in our, our bonds, of our, because we're a great city.
Good solid rating.
Yeah, 10%, best place to downstate.
All right. That's, that's the only questions I have for this, for this particular ordinance. Any additional questions by the rest of council for this ordinance? We'll leave that on a first reading.
First reading, all right, thank you. All right, Ms. Hamilton, read Ordinance 2024-10.
Ordinance number 2024-10, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $565,000 to pay the property owner's portion in anticipation of the collection of special assessments heretofore levied of the cost of improving Melrose Drive between certain termini by grading, draining, widening, paving, resurfacing, constructing curbs, gutters, a multi-use path, sidewalks and driveway approaches, installing storm sewers, catch basins, manholes, water mains, fire hydrants, and traffic control signs, and acquiring any real estate and interest therein required thereby, altogether with the necessary appurtenances thereto and allowing for immediate enactment.
All right. Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
So, so my natural question is, this is in conjunction to the assessment Ms. Warden was discussing earlier, so trying to connect the two pieces of legislation, if Ms. Warden's legislation passes, they have 30 days to, after it's passed, the bills go out, they have to pay it, correct? So we are...
Yes, they can opt to either have a payment or pay it.
Okay, so, it, I'm guessing that we're going to, want to take the debt in case a lot of people decide to go through a payment plan?
I'll actually, I'll match that up to what happens, if, say, they say, for example, say, 200,000, the people who started with the money come to the pad, so the, the, the issuing 565, we issue 365?
Okay.
And just match up with the, the payments will match up.
Got it. You just want to make sure that, hey, if everybody by some crazy reason want to take a...
Yeah, that's a max amount.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense. Okay, perfect, thank you. I don't have any additional questions for this ordinance, does anybody else have anything?
All right, well, it's had its first, it's had its first reading. Ms. Hamilton, read Ordinance 2024-11, please.
Ordinance number 2024-11, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $5,500,000 for the purpose of paying costs of constructing, furnishing, equipping, and otherwise improving a municipal swimming pool, and related recreational facilities, and improving the site thereof, and together with necessary and incidental appurtenances thereto and allowing for immediate enactment.
All right, Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
I could try and keep my foot out of the landmine here. So this is for Christmas Run Pool, correct?
Correct.
Five and a half million. I believe that Ms. Warden and Mr. Sanders are the only two here that were, were part of that discussion. Can I, and I apologize, I am pleading complete ignorance, is, is this a complete and total redo of Christmas Run? So it is demolish it and start new?
Not full house.
Pool, it's a parking lot, the pool, the, the home housing, the memory builders, and the entire area, at that point, oh, I don't know, months ago maybe, I sent a rendering to council as part of the updated, the initial concept of what that would look like.
Okay. On the, on the chart that Mr. Dordia provided us earlier, it, it looks like just for that debt alone, our debt service from 24 to 25 would go up $500,000 per year. That's, that's pretty expensive for a pool.
Which is why when we did our comprehensive plan all last year, we kept asking every, and I'm not arguing one way or the other, but we knew, we've been prepping for this for probably, was asked this year, we started putting information in our budget probably five, six, four years ago, before COVID, so, kind of that, because we knew this was a big task, we knew there was a lot of community interest in this, and we knew that it was going to be, you know, a big decision for council to make, so we, we started putting the projected numbers in the budget back then, and then when we did our comprehensive plan this last year, we asked, you know, our steering committee, we asked our focus groups, and also in our survey we sent out, we asked what people would like to do, just rehab, spend less, spend more, replace, four new pools. At least from a resident's perspective, they, they definitely wanted to see a new pool down there, so that may happen, but that's just data for you to use.
I think it's certainly a big decision for, for four new council members to consider. I don't want to certainly diminish what previous council put into a budget, but the four new council members are going to have their names on funding it, and that's five and a half million dollars and 500,000 per month for the next 15 years in, in the, yeah, that's a lot, so I'll leave her, leave her there since it's on the first reading. I do welcome any additional questions, comments, before I leave it at the first reading.
Well, I, any other council members have any questions?
I feel like we've gone over it significantly in the recent years, there's probably records you can read to see that, if it might be useful to see some of the other points of view that were considered when we discussed this, because I know it was really, we dove deep, and I think that, as Joel said, there is a very strong constituency of people who are adamant that this pool be open and be accessible. I happened to...
I happened to grow up in, on Spink Street, I walked to that pool as a kid. I can see the use for it, especially when we don't have the transportation systems in place that we had back then when I could ride the city bus up to Freelander if I wanted. So anyways, there are, there are a lot of reasons for it. I understand it is a hefty price tag, but yeah, I, I think it's probably wise to have this discussion when the entire body's here.
Agreed.
Yeah.
My only question to the administration is, all right, so if council passes this, but then we don't pass, we don't pass the expenditure on this, the pool, the purchase of the pool itself, then how, what happens with this?
Well, so I would have to enter into, take an arbitrage rate, or I probably did enter into some kind of arbitrage deal, but what that means is I have to pay that money back annually, I'd have to invest the proceeds, so they weren't exceeding, so, well, because they're tax-free bonds, so I could not earn more on, on our investments than what we were, the, the rate on the bonds, because that's called arbitrage, you can't do that in tax-free stuff. So I would actually have to match that up somehow, and then, well, it's not somehow, it's easy, it's fairly easy to do, and then for the next fifteen years, they'll get it back. I mean, if the thing is that, you know, hey, this is something that I'm not going to do, I'm only bringing this forward because it's code economies of scale, if you're going to do it all, you might as well do it all in one shot. The other thing you could do is say, you could vote it down with the intent to visit it later, I mean, maybe this fall, and then I could, you know, I could re, I could re-issure it, or right, not reissue, issue debt at the fall, or diversify it depending on the schedule.
Is it possible we're doing this out of order?
Sort of, only because, yeah, you could say that, but being the bean counter, I was trying to do expedite things, do things cheaper, you know, economies of scale, that's, so you can blame me for that. Because it was in the budget, so, I mean, the budget was passed, so in my mind, okay, it's a done deal, I'm going to obviously.
Oh, Andre, I don't think anybody's blaming you.
If I can save, if I can save the money, I'm going to do it. So anyway, but there's no, you know, I've had no skin in this game, I can do something later, if that's, if that's what your intention is, and that's fine, too.
I mean, it just, I guess my question is, or the, to continue my question, so with the economy of scale and the, the potential risk of an increase in the rate, at this point, I mean, the, the risk of potentially approving this before the, before we actually approve the expenditure, at this point, is really a low risk, is really where I.
Yeah, but I could turn this to others, I think there's an election this year, so I'm not sure what's going to happen. I respect that, so I, I knew rates are now, so I'm, I'm like, okay, we'll lock them in.
I think.
We can make it work, whatever you.
I think actually the risk is, if, if we actually flip-flopped it and we tabled the bond and went with actually approving or voting on and debating the pool itself first, Federal Reserve is, is sending signals of rate decreases later in the year, the likelihood is we would probably get a better deal if we waited to, to fund the bond.
But you're saying you'd like to rehash and we would revisit and re-debate the pool issue as a new body?
Correct.
Interesting.
Well, we're going to have.
I mean, it's been, it's been voted upon.
But I mean, we're going to have that discussion anyways when it comes to, I mean, at this point, we, you know.
We haven't approved any.
We haven't approved.
Plan.
Exactly.
But we've agreed that there's a necessity for it as far as the community feels.
We have, that has been the consensus, but at this point, I mean, in terms of actually approving anything, we've not done that. So from that standpoint, I mean, from my end, I, I mean, I guess, from my end with this, I just want everybody to understand, you know, what we're asking, which I think everybody does at this point, and that's fine. And in light of the fact, since we can't do any more than what we've done tonight, we might as well, at this point, we'll have this, we'll continue this discussion, while I'm sure Ms. Knappick and Mr. Myers.
Say, Mr. Myers will weigh in.
Want some conversation on this.
I just, real quick question, is, so being that there's four of us that are new, and that this has already been hashed out last year by previous council, a lot of this, where could the four of us get some of the information from the focus groups and some of the other thing, because I do know community feedback was very strong on this. And I would say, like Ms. Warden said, you know, for people down in this area of town to get out to Freelander Pool, there's not an easy way to do that in place. And so this pool does serve an area of town that does not have typically transportation or, you know, an easy way to, to take advantage of some of the other pool facilities in the city. So I do know there was a huge, pretty big contingent in support for the pool from the community standpoint.
We asked, we asked those questions on purpose.
Yeah.
You know, because we've been prepping for, like I said, six or seven years.
Sure.
So we knew that was an issue, so we added questions into the comp plan to ask at our stakeholder meetings, and at the community surveys, and at our steering committee level, and so that's why we asked. The other thing, just to point out, just so you have these data points, we've been repairing Christmas Run for several years, and the, and the cost kept going up into the hundreds of thousands of dollars, like a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So maybe if we, we didn't do anything, maybe it would open for one more year, and just so you know, then we would be putting money in the budget if we decided not to move forward. We had put a pretty significant amount in the budget to demolish or abandon it, so that, just so, you know, I don't know what that would be, less than five million, obviously, but it probably, you know, several hundred thousand, million bucks, maybe, you know, to, to properly demolish and abandon that facility there. And, and plus, we'd just be closing the facility, so that.
Does the community action transports go through those neighborhoods?
I'm trying, I, I don't have the route in my head right now, but the, the, like, I don't know if the bus route goes right by there right now. I do know it goes to at least some of those places because one of the subsidized rides is for the, the, the income qualified kids that are part of the, part of those camps and things.
Okay, we'll go ahead and leave it.
Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. President. One thing I want to touch on in response to one of Mr. Abernathy's question, it really doesn't have to do as much with the pool as much as the budgeting process, in that, you know, by approving the budget, certainly this has been an issue, it was talked about, and it was in the budget, but the budget only goes so far. I mean, it's a, an outline, it's a planning tool for how we spend our money, but it doesn't approve the individual items in there. So just the fact that we, last year's council approved a budget with certain items in there, those still have to come before council for approval. So, and again, I'm not, I'm, I'm in favor of, of this particular piece of legislation, so I'm not talking against it, but just making it clear that you're not bound, just because it was in the budget, and it doesn't, this doesn't matter what we're talking about, whether it's a pool or something else, just because it was budgeted for last year does not mean your hands are tied in how you act on this.
And I'm not saying I'm for or against either, but I, again, there's four of us that were not part of that conversation, and, and I know that this, I'm sure that Ms. Warden is, is not enjoying the fact that we are probably going to re-debate this, but there's four new council people that want to take a fresh look at it, unfortunately.
But we will make sure to provide you with all the, everything we can.
It would have been nice to show up to the meeting.
But we're going to have to speed there.
It's all on the website, and we actually have a website that was dedicated.
But taking snipe attacks during the meeting is not going to help either.
I don't feel that's a snipe, I feel like that's pretty clear, I mean, if you want to know what happened, if you want to know what was being discussed or something here, if you elected for it, then you.
We were here.
Oh, interesting.
So all the data from the comp plan, including the detailed survey results and everything, is out on the, on our website. I will send an email to everybody with those links to all of that information. Then you can also go to the website and look back at all the previous budgets for the last several years, and you go back into the capital section, you'll see, and there's a couple of times, we actually just, we put, we just put some description in there, a summary, hey, just so you know, here's some data on, on the pool, a little extra.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we can, at least one thing that we can take into this is that if this is the worst that we've got to discuss this year, spending private, having only dollars on a pool versus all the other possibility, possible items that we could be discussing, I'll take this hands down, so.
You're right, that's.
Good job.
So with that, I think we've beat that one sufficiently, and we'll move on to ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve.
Nice break.
Absolutely.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twelve, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $4 million, $655,000 for the purpose of paying costs of improving streets and roads in the city, including Oak Hill Road, Milltown Road, and Commerce Parkway, by purchasing a right-of-way, constructing, reconstructing, widening, grading, draining, paving, creating a roundabout and otherwise improving, together with all necessary related improvements and appurtenances thereto, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
John, anything fun you want to tell us about the roundabout before it gets started?
Before it gets started?
Well, before, before you close down the road?
Stay away. It's going to be a mess.
All right.
But no, we've, we've had communication with obviously the residents up there, the school, the church, board of elections, because they have a, they use the church tomorrow for Election Day, so I think so far, so good as far as just notifying people what's going on, their best access, those sorts of things.
Okay. And I'm assuming Mr. Dordia, nothing else to add?
Just again, this piece, again, is, is, we're paid for via TIP revenues, and again, over that twenty-five year period, however, so we call provisions, and then if the money's come in greater than anticipated, we can call the bonds earlier.
Okay, I'll leave that on the.
And that was my intention to do so, here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, while we can, there's no doubt this is going to be an inconvenience for, what, two hundred and some days? Two hundred sixty-five days, if I remember.
All instruction seasons.
Yeah.
Yes, thanks.
I mean, the nice thing is, though, is that, I mean, like you say, this summer, everyone's going to, there'll be difficulties, but when it's done, it'll be nice, and we know that, so.
All right, well, Ms. Hamilton, one last time.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $3 million, $100,000 for the purpose of paying costs of improving and maintaining the city's sanitary sewerage system, plant, including upgrades to the biosalts, biogas, and headwork systems, together with all necessary improvements and appurtenances thereto, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Mr. Dordia, anything else you want to add again?
These are for, this is a waste water treatment plant, and they will be paid for by a waste water treatment plant revenues, so we'll pay, we'll be paying for debt service on that.
All right, so one, bond, debt.
Twenty years.
Over twenty years, and Mr. Montgomery?
In addition, these particular improvements here will allow us to accept, accept more third-party waste, so there's, there's a definite revenue stream that's associated with these, we've averaged anywhere from 500,000 to a million dollars when we were running this at full speed before, so as soon as these digestives get back up and this part of it, we'll be, we'll be able to business again, so there'd be a significant amount of revenue that could cover most, if not all, but the debt on this one, so.
Does this include the repairs on the generator?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought.
All right, so again, these ordinances aren't necessarily for the work, they're for the issuance of debt, and we will be leaving this on the first reading.
All right, very good. So a long meeting, a number of very interesting topics. Mr. Jose, anything to add in miscellaneous section this evening?
Just thanks to the administration for the presentation before the meeting today, and condolences to the Knappick family.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes, I was, stole my thunder a little bit there, want to send my condolences to Councilwoman Knappick on the loss for brother, Dr. Knappick, he was a personal friend, very sad to hear of his passing, but I will say this, that there's a way to go, golfing in Jamaica and, and going on the golf course, man, that's the way to go, and I'm thinking about him a lot, and rest well, my friend.
Thank you. Mr. Gaffey?
I would just, also like to just extend condolences to the Knappick family. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add.
Very good, thank you. Ms. Warden?
Yes, again, condolences to the Knappicks, and Barb, we're thinking about you, and, you know, we're here for you, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Malta?
And I will repeat the same.
All right.
condolences to the Knappick family, no further.
Thank you. The only thing I'm going to add is the, I had a phone call a couple of weeks ago, I talked to the administration about it, no major issue, but AEP over the years has, has had a program where they were fairly, they were trying to stay on top of any type of streetlights where they might be out, and like you say, the, the phone call that I got was from a, from a homeowner up at the north end of Christmas Run, basically saying, hey, she's noticed over the years, or recently, that there's a lot more streetlights that aren't operational. And so at this point, I just wanted to tell everyone in the public that if you get on the city website and go to the contact tab on the website, at that point at the bottom, it gives you instructions in terms of how and whom to contact related to, with AEP related to that, and if you don't want to do that, you can just call the city and talk to somebody in engineering. So sorry to throw engineering under the bus on that, but.
I want to give John a highlight while you're mentioning that.
All right.
Because their Omni Source is on our website, you can go direct and file a complaint. You know, I had a lot of repairs, both front and backyard, so I needed that contact information. I was contacted as well by a resident.
Okay.
So those utilities that are all running around, it's all on the website, John did a great job.
Yeah, absolutely.
It is, it is on the website, but you said that it's sort of buried now, so maybe because somebody contacted over the weekend, and I couldn't find the information myself, so perhaps it could be bumped back up.
Well, it's under the engineering webpage, construction news, so it's there, you just have to know where to look.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Mayor?
Since no one else said it, it's Twilight's Election Day, so just a reminder for everybody that nobody yet to get out there, and be yourself.
All right, very good. And with that, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Abernathy, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Rejourn, thank you.